Welcome and welcome to this meeting of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee today. The meeting today is open to the public and the meeting will be webcast and re-recording will also be available to people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and broadcast this meeting. We have not received any public questions or petitions from members of the public by the submission deadline. Please request that mobile phones and other such devices are switched to silent so not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff and assemble in Tudor Square. As each policy committee in turn, could you please introduce yourselves? I'll start from this side, thank you.
Marouf Rauf, councillor for the village of Shallow, and deputy chair of this committee.
Malakai Haye, councillor for Bromley and Shalwell.
Councillor Seanad Myer Richards, councillor for Manren Castle, and I'm substituting today for Nigat Basharat.
Councillor Ian Horner, councillor for Baiden.
Councillor Mohamed Marouf, councillor for Greys Park, and Lib Dem Group spokesperson for this.
Councillor Anne Whitaker, councillor for West Ecklesfield Ward.
Thank you, that's councillor Jane Dunleavy, my microphone's not working, thank you.
It is now.
Okay, thank you. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the... Oh, sorry, Seanad.
Sorry Chair, I just wanted to ask who the new member is from the new group, do we know yet?
I've not been given that information yet.
We do know, it's Diane Hurst.
Diane Hurst. Have we had apologies?
We haven't.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So the agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website and paper copies are available at the meeting. There is one agenda item reports pack and one supplementary document. Please note that the appendices for item eight are not available to the public and press because they contain exempt information described in paragraph three of schedule 12a to the Local Government Act 1972 as amended. If members wish to discuss the information, we will need to ask the members of the public, but we don't have any here today, and the press to kindly leave for that part of the meeting and we will halt the webcast. For today's meeting, what I will be doing is I'll be moving the agenda around if that's all right for everyone. So once we get to, we'll go through the agenda up to agenda item number seven, then we'll go to nine, 10, 11, 12, take agenda item number eight at the end, which is the closed session, if that's all right for everyone. It just says people who are watching at home, having a break and then having to come back, they can then leave at that point. Thank you. So, pardon?
Maybe.
Yeah. So, do we have any apologies for absence Fiona today? No, thank you very much.
Yes, Nigat.
Oh, Nigat, have you recorded that? Yeah, thank you. Exclusions of the public and press, as we've just said, will be closed session for agenda item number eight. Are there any declarations of interest from any members today? No. And we have minutes from the previous meeting, which is on page 11 of your agenda pack. Are members happy to approve these minutes as a true record of the previous meeting on 27th of September? Thank you, they're approved, thank you. Do we have any members' questions at this point in the meeting? No, no members' questions, thank you very much. Over to you then Fiona, for the work programme please.
Good afternoon. So if you turn to page 24 and 25, and I think page 28, that lists our agenda for today's meeting. There have been very few changes since we last met, and obviously as well we can see December's agenda has got a couple of items that have moved. I would like to draw your attention to an addendum which was sent out this morning, which every policy committee will be considering, to note a council motion agreed on the 4th of October in respect of investment in renewable energy projects and to agree the action to be taken in response. This recommendation is that each policy committee add this item to their work programme, and I think Dawn will ask that we agree that recommendation.
We all agree that recommendation? Agreed, thank you Fiona. Councillor Dan?
Yeah, can I ask you, has something been dropped to add this? Has something been removed off? I haven't seen the earlier one because I haven't had access to the internet. So has something been removed off the work programme to accommodate this?
No.
That's okay, that's fine, that was all I wanted to know.
Thank you Jen. Anything else Fiona?
No, as ever I would invite councillors to add anything or suggest any items that they want to be added to the work programme.
Thank you. Any questions on the work programme, councillor Hayeby?
I think I'm running ahead here, I was going to discuss the admissions referral.
Thank you. Do you want to just ask on that? Yeah.
So in our admissions committee, because this is live, I won't be giving too much details, as you can see on page 24, we reviewed a school, a home school transport appeal, and it had a... What came out about it is a lot of faith schools aren't always in close distance to homes, however, the catchment areas for those schools, if they were beyond that, they wouldn't be able to get zero fare pass. We felt like as a committee that this policy committee should review those decisions and policies and include faith schools, so we could add that to the work programme for a later date and to discuss that.
Thank you, yeah. Councillor Rauf and myself have asked for that to be added to our work programme. There have been a couple of instances where you've referred to things to us now since August, so we have asked for the trio initially to have a look at that policy and then decide when it will come on the work... It will come on the work programme, we can have that discussion, but we just need to work out when we're going to get that on the work programme. Mary, did you want to?
Yeah. Be all right. If you weren't awake now, you're awake now. It wasn't about admissions actually, it was about an additional item on the agenda. So, do you want me to do that? So the ILAX inspection report will be published tomorrow, and if you stand outside you'll possibly see what the judgement is and when we take our photos, and I think it's really important that that's on the agenda with the action plan as well.
Brilliant, thank you.
Thank you, so can we just ensure that that is on the work programme? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda then, is everybody all right with that? Any more questions on the work programme, any comments, any proposals for additional items to be added? No, great stuff, thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to agenda item number nine, which is the Children and Families Sufficiency Strategy, which is on page 51 of your agenda pack, and I understand that presenting officer is Sally Williams. So this report does contain recommendations for approval, which we will discuss at the end, thank you.
So thank you, so this sufficiency strategy is a requirement for our local authorities for our sufficiency duty to provide placements for our looked after childrens. And strategy shows our intentions to improve outcomes for looked after children and care leavers through the right number and range of high quality placements and accommodation options, and the strategy sets out how we'll meet our statutory duty. The sufficiency strategy is based on our ethos and our principles about how we work in children's services, and that is that children stay at home when it's safe to do so. Children are reunited home at the earliest opportunity when it's safe to do so, and when children can't leave at home with their families, we look to their existing networks and family, friends within their communities to support children. When that's not possible, we look to family based care, so foster care or high quality residential placements. And throughout all that process, what we will continually do is look at children being able to return home safely or with connected carers where it's safe to do so. This is really important as key to our sufficiency strategy, because what that means in Sheffield is we've got really low numbers of looked after children compared with our statistical neighbours, neighbouring local authorities etc. And so in terms of the moving forward with the strategy, we are looking at being able to be very flexible in our approach to commissioning arrangements and the changing needs of children and young people in Sheffield. What we know is we've had a lot of change in the demographics of children in care over the last few years, and we've got an increasing complexity of children and young people in care. We have rising placement costs when we're looking to external providers, and we have had an increase of unaccompanied asylum seeking children in the city. Alongside that, we've got, there's a regional and national shortage of placements, and that creates real big challenge in the independent market and about essentially profiteering from the placements of children who are looked after. So endorsement of a strategy will allow children and families to provide right number and types of homes for children who are looked after in Sheffield. It's about improving outcomes for children and care leavers, and that's about having that range of high quality placements, and providing local homes in Sheffield to enable children to maintain links, and that's so important because it relates to things like family relationships, friendship groups, links with the communities, and being able to continue with education. And it's also about working closely with our colleagues in commissioning as well to make sure that we have that best value for money and the quality of care. So what the strategy is and what the ask is from yourselves is to accept our ethos, our way of working about that we will continue to go back to consult with children, young people and families, with our partners and with other providers about what we need for our children. We'll continue to review the strategy throughout, and that's about working again with commissioning colleagues, looking at what our in-house residential and foster care provision is, and about understanding continually what the needs of our children and young people are. And so a bit interesting in terms of context, which I've already touched on, and it's just about the, as knowing our population of children in Sheffield. So this data is from the summer when we've been working on the sufficiency strategy that highlights the demand. And so looking at that we've got 1,800 children child in need plans, 600 children who were child protection plans, and 634 looked after children. And you can see that that then, as looked after children get older, we have an increasing number of care leavers, so 675 care leavers with pathway, active pathway plans, and that means about being engaging with services. And that looked after children rate as of September, but it has gone down, so at this point we're 59 children per 10,000, and that's compared to our statistical neighbours who have 93 looked after children for 10,070 is the English average. Liverpool is a core city and would come up as one of our statistical neighbours, and currently their rate per 10,000 is 172, so just showing the difference in work that we're doing with our children in Sheffield. So further information, just what we'll continue to do is really about knowing our children and young people, and what we need to do to make sure our children and young people are placed in the city, and that work, not only within city, but something that's really key for Sheffield is within 20 miles of the home address, because sometimes living just outside the city means that they're closer to home, and we take that into account when we're looking for placements and care planning. So one of the things that I want to highlight as part of sufficiency strategy is around the costs. So in there we've got weekly costs for in-house foster care, which is the most cost effective, right up to residential placements. These are the average costs, and I think it's really important to note that it's the small numbers that make a real big difference in terms of sufficiency, and that's where we want to be really robust in our sufficiency strategy moving forward, about being able to make sure that we are securing placements at the right price and the right quality for our children and young people, and that we can achieve stability for our children. So big part of the strategy is what we're already doing, and I've already talked about keeping children and young people at home where it's safe to do so. Next is about how we can better support our connected carers, so family, friends who are looking after our children and young people, and that's about linking into other parts of the council as well, the support that we know exists within communities for example. It's about continuing to review our foster care recruitment and ensuring that our foster carers represent our children and young people in the city. It's making sure that we can stabilise placements home by having a robust overnight respite offer for families that might need it, and it's reviewing consistently the placement, that all placements meet the needs of the children, and that we can be clear about what those needs are, and that includes robust monitoring through our commissioning service. We're looking at alternative options, and so we're increasing the number of supported lodgings placements, and we've got a particular drive at the moment about using supportive lodgings to support some of our unaccompanied asylum seekers, and we're doing that based on feedback from some of our unaccompanied asylum seeker children, that they feel that that would be the best option about how to live in a family environment. Support, just as an aside, supportive lodgings provisions are regulated from the end of October, so registration is in place for Sheffield to be a supportive lodgings provider with Ofsted. And working with our young people to transition into independence, and that's working alongside the council of housing about that right tendency, secure tendency at right time for our children and young people. We're working closely with commissioning, and this is something to continue, about reducing our framework placements. So we work with the White Rose Framework that commissions and has oversight of our providers. What we know in recent years is providers not adhering to, not sticking with the framework, and that has cost implications about different fees being charged for placements. We're going to continue to improve joint commissioning between social care, send, education and health, and making sure that when we need that joined up provision, that that's right and it's the right services from all our partners. We're realigning our residential, in-house residential provision, looking at what works, we're looking to other authorities and looking at what the outcomes are for residential provisions in other areas so we can make sure that our residential in the city is the best for our children and young people. And we're continually reviewing short breaks offer to make sure that there's that support for families to prevent family breakdown. And again, it's about making sure that those reunification options are always in place. And so in terms of implementing a strategy, we've got an action plan that's owned by both children's services and colleagues in integrated commissioning, and that's regularly monitored. We're developing our residential strategy to meet the needs of our young people, and really key part of this is we're continually talking to our children and young people, listening to things like the Bright Spot Survey, our Children in Care Council, Voice and Influence Workers and Care Leavers Union, to make sure that children live in homes where they feel safe and supported. And regular updates will be provided to corporate parents involved to scrutinise where we are in terms of our strategy.
Thank you very much Sally. Do any members have any questions or comments on this item?
Seanad? I have lots, but I think that might just be because I don't come here very often, so excuse me, I'm now going to show my immense ignorance of lots of things. Questions, unaccompanied minors, are these coming directly to Sheffield or are they part of a dispersal framework? Because I know that Kent receives a lot of unaccompanied minors and then they move, so can I ask how that works? Shall I just keep asking me questions or do you want to do them?
Okay, one at a time then.
So Sheffield's part of the National Transfer Scheme, we've been part of the scheme since prior to it being mandatory. So on a rotation basis Sheffield receives children essentially from Kent as part of that process. We've also been involved in discussions previously when there's been pressures in Kent and increasing the number of young people that's come through that scheme to Sheffield as well. But in addition, we do also have quite a number of spontaneous arrivals to the city, so it's a combination of both. And to mention any unaccompanied asylum seeking children or people who claim to be children that have been placed as adults within the city will be age assessed and treated as young people coming from Kent for example would be. So I suppose it's three different routes.
I suppose I wanted to ask then, do those tend to be emergency or planned placements? We know that we're going to have children because of the national scheme, or is it more spontaneous than that?
We try to be as planned as possible, so these, the spontaneous arrivals, we've been working, lots of communication with DFE for example, about how we could be more effective, about being able to, for example, be able to say which placements we might have available and plan better for young people. So it is, we're all aware that it is a crisis in Kent, and so we do work as quick as possible, so not a long planning period.
And will they tend to be placed on their own or with foster parents if we can do it? Because I can imagine that coming to, somebody who came to Sheffield 22 years ago and is still getting used to it, then, you know, coming to Sheffield from somewhere, if you've come from Afghanistan or somewhere, must be, you know, a bit of a shock to say the least. And do we have families who, or other groups that they can be connected with such that it isn't just coming to this dark northern city and being, you know, almost not abandoned because clearly they have social workers and things, but being introduced into meeting people that they will be, feel more comfortable with and be able to socialise with etc.
So the placements are different based on the needs of the children as they come. In terms of being placed with a family, I think, and it's part of our sufficiency strategy, we need more families, and that's more families as for, as foster placements, about that care, our supported accommodation that is much more independence led. We've been doing work within our care leaver service about ensuring that we can build those networks up a lot better for unaccompanied asylum seeking children, and acknowledging that children come from various places all over the world, and about what support each young person needs, and being able to make sure that we can respond to that, working with colleagues in communities, with education, and about that right access to support.
I've got about three more questions.
Who wants to carry on, Seanad, and then I'll...
Thank you. We understood that during Covid and certainly post-Covid that we had more children coming into care, is that still the case or has that reverted again as Covid tends to recede in our memories?
We're currently, I think, about two young people less than pre-Covid levels, so we've passed the peak and we're to the side. That's absolutely testament to our edge care services and the work that's done about being able to support and stabilise families, and a real wraparound that we have.
That's good. I just wanted to ask then about residential care, because, you know, as councillors we all get casework, and I had one of somebody who was a teenager who was, what's the phrase? When you give a, not diagnosed, but when you said, right, what this teenager needs is to be with teenage experienced foster carers, and there weren't any, and the child, the young person ended up being in a residential home, which was actually I think between Leeds and York, and then being taxied in to school from there when they were able to get them in. And I just thought, that just seemed so at odds with what had been proposed as the fostering scheme, and I know that it was not a good experience for the young person. Are we still having to do that? I know you said about the 20 mile sort of ring that you're trying to use, is it still, is it the case you, teenagers clearly are harder to place, and are they the ones most likely therefore to have to go into residential? Thank you, rather than, than stay at home or be with foster parents? I thought it was confusing, sorry.
Unfortunately, yes, it still happens that children and young people have to be placed out of the city, and like you said, to be maintained in their schools in Sheffield, that might involve long journeys to get to and from school, which is why we're looking at our in-house residential strategy about being able to have more robust provision and a better choice of provision within the city. So it's not, because it's not just about journeys to and from school, it is about communities, it's about friendship groups, everything that goes with it, and it's all the services, health services, CAMHS for example, that we want to make sure that we're there and can provide that support. These are national shortage in terms of foster placements, so it is not a particular Sheffield issue, and it's something that we will be ongoing and really persistent really to recruit foster carers and support foster carers for children, young people of all ages. And it's not necessarily about what traditionally would have been older teenagers, I think, in terms of residential, it's very different in terms of the needs of our young people and placement availability, which is really key to us having a really robust sufficiency strategy and working with our colleagues in...
Commission.
Just about making sure that we are getting the right placements and that we've got a choice of placements where we need to.
Two more Marouf. I didn't actually know, this is just appalling, isn't it, that we still had our own residential accommodation for young people in Sheffield, so what do we have?
I'm going to have to count in my head now. So we have our secure children's home, we have a short breaks home for children with disabilities, we have two short breaks homes for children with learning difficulties and You may know that they've been, they've been closed for some time due to placement issues. One reopens, we've already started with tea visits, introductions and things, and it's reopening next week I believe, so that's quite significant for us. And then in terms of our mainstream homes, we currently have four. We are looking to reduce that number to three in the coming weeks, and that is because the building's not fit for purpose to move forward, it's not something that we would want to carry in as a home for children. And then we also have a residential home for children with ASD.
I think it might be helpful if you could explain what a children home looks like now, because part of the reason that we're looking at... Because part of the reason that we've been looking at closing one is because actually what's fit for purpose now is very different from what we perhaps have seen on TV, et cetera. So I don't know if you'd like to...
Yes, it's not all Tracy Beaker, is it?
So, for example, the children's home that we're closing is a very large home. I think it was initially eight beds. So it is that big space, it's now got office space and things in. And it looks like a children's home. What we want is to make sure that we have smaller homes that are for two, maybe three, young people. It is that more homely environment. It's somewhere that if people are, if young people are walking past with their mates, doesn't stand out about being a children's home and has that normality. That's been made more accessible to us really about some changes in the regulations, about being able to have clusters of small homes rather than one big home. And so what we want to do is be able to have the smaller homes. And one thing that's very difficult is having six teenagers, for example, all living together. Is, yeah, your reaction says it all.
It's interesting actually because small homes like that were pioneered in Sheffield. And it sounds horrible to say, but the workhouse in Fervale pioneered it because they wanted to stop children having to live in big places like that. I just think it's interesting that we're still trying to do that smaller is better thing. My final, final, final question is what do we do to support kinship carers? Quite often grandparents who have taken on grandchildren. And much as we love our grandchildren, we are older and it is harder. So what support do we give? Not just financially, but sort of in terms of support groups and things like that?
So there's regular support groups, there's coffee mornings that we've got, what is a very small connected carers team, but do offer support, looking at the support plans, but also looking wider. Because a lot of services that would be appropriate would be things like early help services. Just because somebody's a connected carer, it doesn't mean that the rest of the offer shouldn't be there and accessible. And about reviewing support plans, so it's having those conversations. Quite recently, I met with some connected carers and they were talking. One of the most important things for them were about the support groups and about being able to speak to other people and share experiences. Because it's not something that people planned for and needing that emotional support as well.
Thank you. councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report and thank you for the various briefings that we've been getting on this coming into this committee today. I've learnt quite a lot from it, to be honest. But two or three things that I am still concerned about and I think that needs to be on record. One is that you mentioned earlier, the third sector sort of private profiteering element, which is quite concerning considering that our budgets are fairly tight as they stand on page 55. What are we doing to minimise that? I know you outlined it, but I think what is it that we can practically do to minimise that? That's question number one. Question number two, just following on from that, is probably a little bit of a solution as well, is obviously the local authority has a lot of property. Is your service on the list that gets consulted before a property is actually disposed of? Because experience tells me probably not. And if you did actually volunteer and said we needed to keep that property within the service, maybe arguments were always raised against it. So we really need to look at our own estate first. It's much easier and it's much cheaper. And I think, Chair, if I may suggest, that might be something that we sort of add on there, that any surplus property is actually run past yourselves first, whether that is a sundry property or whether that's a local authority housing or just generally a property or even land that is run past you. So that is something constructive that I'm trying to bring in here. So let you answer those two first and then I've got one final one.
So in terms of the external market, Amy's team does a lot of work with providers about building relationships with providers, about conversations about what we can need, about doing events, about what the needs for our children and young people are and goes through robust tendering processes for contracts and what we can do there. I know from activity that's been happening in the last few weeks in particular, when there's been requests around an increase in prices about the absolute robust action that's been taken about going back and challenging breakdowns of costs, where inquiries come from and doing everything possible to negotiate reasonable costs. And so there's a lot of activity to try and make sure that costs are fair. I think it's important to know on that that with the regulation of semi-independent accommodation from last week, that's increased costs in semi-independent provision, which is the same provision as it was the previous week, but with now with offset regulation. So that's also had an impact. And what we know is about that security of placements as well, that we don't have from independent providers, which is why we want to ensure we've got secure relationships with providers and the contracts that go with that, but also that more control from our own in-house provision. And in terms of your second question, we are in the process of updating our residential strategy about what that looks like. And I would love for us to be able to have access to lots of properties. But it also requires a financial commitment as well for us to be able to turn those into children's homes.
No, thank you for that answer, but yes, I'm just saying that on our estate we do have quite a number of properties.
Sorry, I know Meredith wants to come in, but historically, when I've been doing this job for a bit, we have looked at some of our properties already. So we do have that dialogue with housing, but also with estate management to look at properties we are disposing of. But quite often, they're probably too big anyway for us to be able to use as residential and cost later. I know we had one that had got a tree growing in it and it were going to cost us and it were a perfect building in an ideal space, but it would have cost us, we could have probably built a house for less than it would have cost us to remove the tree. So I do understand that we have done that previously and I'm sure that'll be happening as part of the strategy, but Meredith.
So councillor Marouf, I just, I want to reiterate what Sally has said in the presentation already, that the way of countering that profiteering is by making sure that we have really good and early help services that prevent escalation of need, making sure that only children who need to come into care, come into care, that where they do come into care, that they're with families first or with foster carers. And doing all of those things prevents the high-cost placements and the need for us to find those placements and we do that well in Sheffield. I do think that there is continues to be an issue about how we make sure that we are raising the issues. And I'm sure in the newspapers you've seen recently some concerns about how, one, a key provider of care in the country has made huge profits over the last year. And that's something which, you know, we look to make sure we're making the right decisions for our children and young people, that they have the best outcomes and that also we're challenging that behaviour by the way that we interact with the market.
Councillor Marouf.
Thank you for that comprehensive response. Councillor Whitaker and I were actually discussing that very case before we came into the committee, the huge amounts of profiteering that's going on. Just for everybody's sake really, I know you've given an average of what an external cost per person is. It might be just worth just giving the extremes, what, how much we are actually paying. The worst case scenario.
The worst case scenario was £29,000, £29,000 per week, a request.
£29,000 a week?
Yes.
That is quite serious, isn't it, really?
Some of the costings that are suggested, and that is an extreme example. I think it's very important that there is some high-cost placements that are incredibly effective and provide really good care and have fantastic outcomes for children and young people. And it's the right placement at the right time. There's others that are a placement and a very high-cost placement without whistles and bells, I suppose.
No, thank you. Thank you for that answer. I think I just wanted to put it in context what the costs were. My final question, Chair, nothing to do with final...
Meredith, can Meredith just go back on that? Sorry, councillor Marouf.
I suppose councillor Marouf, what I want to say as well is that, as you can imagine, the staff who are working in that area, trying to ensure that we get the right placements for children and with that pressure, it's really, really difficult. And they do a sterling job in all local authorities, but particularly in Sheffield, in trying to manage those conversations, whether it be in the commissioning team or whether it be in children and family services. So I think it's really important that we say that people are managing that pressure the entire time.
No, thank you for that. I understand the sensitivity of it all. It's quite a difficult area anyway. My final, final question, making it sound as audit committee this, isn't it, Shonad, you and I? But yeah, my final question is, as our population in Sheffield is changing quite considerably and you've already touched upon people coming from abroad and wanting placements, how diverse is our foster carers?
Not diverse enough, I think, is the simple answer. It's a continual piece of work that we need to do to be able to access different communities, talk to different people. And we're looking at our foster care strategy at the moment as recruitment strategy and just making sure that it's accessible to all, it's making sure that we can, that we've got information in different languages, that we've got access to different community groups and things to have those conversations and to make sure that people understand why it needs to be a foster carer or a supported lodgings provider. And understanding, I think, myth busting really. Previously, the view of being a foster carer was very much about a married couple, but there's more options, lots of things have changed since, I think, that was the foster care message. I think that's about 25 years ago now. So about us being able to have those conversations and help people understand what being a foster carer means. So it is a big piece of work and it's a piece of work that we can't stop pushing.
Thank you. I've not got any questions, but just two comments for members about what is that we can do with regards to supporting this strategy. And I think one of the key ones is getting out into our communities and encouraging foster carers from our communities that we're representing to get involved, find out a bit more and support our offices that are going out into communities and directing them into our neighbourhoods where we know we've got people who could be potentially fantastic foster carers for some of our young people. So I think as, I know that they've gone through our local area committees, but I think sometimes we can, as elected members, we can really get into our communities. So I think that's our responsibility as members to support that campaign as well. And I think as politicians, we have a responsibility to challenge the profiteering on children's services. So I think we should be feeding that right back up our trees, up the chains to the very top so that when we're looking at policy at a national level, that we should actually be making sure that we're challenging the profiteering of children's services when we are setting policy at a national level. Because that is very much where those decisions are made and that's where they filter down. So if there are any other asks you've got of us as elected members to be able to support any of these strategies, I think it's really important that you let us know. So thank you very much. So in light of me just doing that a little bit, this report does come with a recommendation that the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee is recommended to approve the Children and Families Sufficiency Strategy as appended to the report at Appendix 1. Is everybody in agreement with this? There is no dissent? So thank you very much. That's been approved. Thank you. Oh, Shonad.
Sorry, sort of connecting with this, are you going to say anything about the resolution which we passed yesterday at full council?
Thank you for that. So we're going to now go to agenda item number 10, which is the update and next steps on the Race Equality Commission recommendations pertaining to the children's services. And I understand I've got Bob Cuff, Lindsay Knight, Amanda Broughton-Brown and Meredith Teasdale. Thank you.
So I'm going to start and so while my colleagues get themselves comfortable. This will come a shock to everybody, but I've only been here for four months. I know, I feel like an old worn shoe. And the reason I say that is this is my third committee. And that first committee that I was part of very much highlighted the work that we needed to do around the Race Equality Commission and how we responded to that as a children's services. And over that period of time, we've done a considerable amount of work on it. And as you can see, my colleagues are sitting, who have absolutely been fundamentally driving that through our services. And what we're wanting to do, and we promised we'd do this, is that we would come back to you with where we are. This is an iterative process. It is about us starting to get things right and you challenging us to see if we can be doing more, but also setting out what our direction of travel is. And you will, I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves. Some of them you will know, some of them are new to the authority, given some real drive to this. And some you will have come across in other guises. So I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves first, so starting with Andrew.
Andrew Jones, Director of Education Skills.
And I'm Bob Cuff and I'm probably the most recent addition to the local authority, but I'm very proud to be here. And I work as a school advisor for education skills and in children's services.
Amanda Broughton-Brown and the Assistant Director for Politicians and Involvement Service within the local authority children's services.
Good afternoon. I'm Lindsay Knight. I'm also Assistant Director of Children and Families and I'm responsible for our residential service.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is take you through a presentation which Bob and Amanda and Lindsay have pulled together. They will be with Andrew Abley challenging me when I go off piste or when they can say things better. I also want to give you assurance that at the committee meeting three months ago, I promised to send out a communication to leaders of colour within the education system in Sheffield. I have done that and also to aspirant leaders of colour. I have met and had conversations with a number of colleagues. I met with Linda Joseph this morning, who is Head of Springfield Primary School. She has agreed to chair the race equality work that we're doing with the education system. And the first meeting of that is on the 7th of November. We are looking at the conversations about how do we ensure that the work that we're doing has an impact on our children within Sheffield, but also around the workforce. And we also have a presentation at that meeting from a training provider with some of that thought about, is there something we can do across the city around looking at training for the entire city? And is that commitment that we can make? Those things aren't necessarily within these slides, but again, hopefully give you that, understanding that commitment that we're all taking to make sure that we are doing what we say we will do and that we are looking to ensure that we get action. We've already established I'm not particularly good at technology, so we'll see how this goes. Ooh, that's quite small. Is that my brain or is that my... Bob, what's it saying? I can't see it either. Can we, I don't know, I don't think we've got, let me grab, Bob.
But that was just to, just to interrupt Meredith, that was just a screen grab of the recommendations that were most pertinent to education and skills and children's services. The next slide on actually lifts them into a higher front, I hope. There you go. Yeah, one of the things that I really wanted to do was go through each one, just to assess in terms of the lenses that we're looking at this through. And I think it's important to talk about the fact that there are many lenses. The first one is within Sheffield City Council in particular for children's services. Then there's the corporate response to the Race Equality Commission, which is another important lens. And as Meredith highlighted earlier, the singular most important lens is for our children and young people of the city. So each one of these recommendations you'll see in a minute will be a subheading for the subsequent slides to see where we are, where we've reflected and what we need to do. And it's not a finite list that you're about to see councillors, it's a part of the journey that we're on.
So there are some conversations, I am only four months old, which means I don't really know how to work the technology or the microphone. There are some conversations which were having with our foster carers within our children's homes, which we have far more holdover, but then there are others where we are talking across the entire education system, across the early years system, across the post-16 system, talking with South Yorkshire Police. So again, these are, some of these are things which are in our control, some of these are where we are negotiating and influencing. So the first action from the commission is to design out racism from organisations. We are already looking to do a lot of work around that ourselves. We are looking at how we are doing things ourselves within the corporate picture. And there will be papers coming through to corporate S and R and also sort of in the next couple of weeks and months, and we've contributed to that. It is about us shoring up our forums, looking at whether we have ambassadors across the city council, also about our recruitment processes. And again, those conversations are ongoing and we're really looking at making sure that we affect change. One of the things that I'm really passionate about is I think sometimes our HR, our recruitment processes can actually be really off putting to people within our community and particularly to our young people. So what is it that we need to do differently? And that also then supports how we're designing racism out of our organisation. We're absolutely looking at that, making sure that people are attending and doing their mandatory EDI training. But we're also putting additional training in place. And Amanda and Lindsay, I know you've done some of that in your area, so.
Yeah, we've, what we do is, within Race Equality Week, we had a week where all services, right across children's services, would spend the first 15 minutes of that morning to have some open, honest conversations around race, around unconscious bias and what that means. We've also, we, there is the mandatory training, but we've had lots of conversations about actually what we want is, we want face-to-face training for people that actually, particularly around this particular subject, needs to be face-to-face, not online. We need people participating and people to know that actually involves everybody. So we're quite clear about that. That's what we're looking at.
And also within our leadership team meetings, our team meetings, it is something that we are regularly talking about. And it's about giving people that opportunity to provide the right challenge and to have the tools to be able to appropriately challenge each other where they see microaggressions, where they see behaviours that they think are wrong. And I would say that in the time that I've been here, I have seen much more of that happening and much more of that challenge happening as well. We're not there yet, but I think it is an opening up of some of the work that we have been doing over a period of time. I don't know, Andrew, Bob, if you want to add anything else to this slide. You don't need to, I'm just double checking. Okay. So if we move on to the next slide, which I didn't manage to move on. So again, this is again about pushing what we're doing around our curriculum as well. I've had some really interesting conversations with head teachers. Some head teachers already feel that they are addressing the work around their curriculum. Others see additional work to do. There's different views about whether Black History Month is helpful or not within schools. And again, it's about how we create some kind of space for those conversations to happen. And Bob, I don't know if you want to talk about the festival as well?
Yeah, so again, one of the lenses and how we can collaborate with partner organisations, one important one for us is Learn Sheffield. They have a reach across educational settings in Sheffield and they are joining us in the journey and supporting us at Sheffield City Council in the journey and putting on, you can see this week, the, next week, oh, excuse me, a couple of weeks' time, the Diversity and Equity Conference, which will look at more inclusive recruitment, it'll look at belonging, it'll look at how communities feel a part of their school and how underrepresented groups can be reached more by a curriculum and a narrative in the school's context. And then my hope is that we can then cascade some of the best practice that we find from across the city and further showcase to support and collaborate with other settings.
Great, thank you. Do you want to add anything, Amanda and Lindsay?
Yeah, I think for us certainly around, we've, having had conversations with universities, specifically looking at, we know that in some areas, our social workforce doesn't reflect the community that it serves. So we've gone back to the universities to request the information that they have. How many people of colour start the process, are actually recruited is the first thing. And how many people complete is the next thing. And then looking at how we recruit, how we recruit into some areas, but then we're not recruiting into others. So we've got a list of ideas that we're looking at around mentoring, around, we've got somebody that's coming in to do a video, to look at aspirations with leaders of colour, so that actually we've got something that people can see to aspire to. So we're looking at that currently.
And then if I move on, we are again making sure that we're linking this through to the corporate work about addressing some of the issues about how we ensure that we are identifying people who haven't undertaken their mandatory EDI training, how we make sure that we've got the right processes for recruitment and how we have the right panels as well for recruitment as well to make sure that we have that consistent approach across the city council. And that's very much linked to our training and that golden thread that we have moving through. So if I move on, so again, I haven't moved on. Don't know why I'm pointing it. There we go. So this again is what Bob has already been talking about, which is the, some of that specific training that we've got in the next few weeks. We're looking at how we're also putting in place training throughout the year. And as I said, there is a conversation that we're having across the education system about whether we buy in some specific training for every school as well. And we'll keep you updated on that. Okay, so if I move on then to the next slide, so race equality's responsibility to be conspicuous in duties and next step. So again, this is about how we're building this into our way of working, into our governance, into our conversations, how we're making sure that we're having the conversation and we're influencing our corporate body about recognising the importance of people being chairs of forums, being, taking on roles as ambassadors around equality and diversity and inclusion. It's also about how we support our staff to champion and to be part of those focus groups so that they can also influence what we are doing and how we are doing it. And again, that's about us as leaders and managers within children's services, supporting our staff to take on those roles and to give them that time to do that. Anything, anybody wants to add to that? Cool. Okay, so if we move on again, so this is also then working externally with Learn Sheffield around this. I've had some really interesting conversations with leaders of colour within the city and particularly female leaders of colour, but I don't think it is exclusive. And they have said that they feel that they need to work 150% harder than peers, that getting that immediate support from staff group, they almost need to be over competent and there's no opportunities for them to show any vulnerabilities. And then also with parent group, there's conversations about how, and again, the group that is happening on the 7th of November is to discuss that and to discuss what we can put in place to support around that across the system, but also how potentially to provide coaching and mentoring. And again, how, when you're dealing with microaggressions on a regular basis, you can see, you can hear it, you can feel it, what are you doing, how are you supported when actually your colleague, I don't necessarily see or feel that. So it's really important and that conversation has to be with our leaders, our aspirant leaders who are in that space at the moment. So that's why that's, you know, there is an aspiration to do that, but it has to be with those leaders leading that work and supporting that. So I'm really looking forward to the meeting on the 7th of November, where I know quite a lot of our leads within the city will be there. So if we move on, and that's why this is an iterative process, because it's not just what we are doing, it's how we're interacting with other people and how we're understanding what the issues are. I don't know why I'm just shooting it at you, but at some stage it'll move on. There we go. Okay, so this is how we're implementing a race equality framework with, so within what we're doing internally. So Bob, I'm going to hand over to you and Amanda and Lindsay just for this one, because I think this is really important that you have ownership of it.
Yeah, so again, being you, what was helpful when I spoke to colleagues across the service is they've all got different remits with different age groups. So if we took education and skills, it goes from early years right through to lifelong learning and skills. So the audience, the customers are very different in some senses. And they've gone away and created their own bespoke race equality frameworks for how their service impacts on their customers and vice versa. And it was quite empowering to listen to some of these and the slideshow, some examples that they've gone away and gone the extra mile for their services to do that. But I think the questions were from colleagues in those services, making sure that we're consistent with any corporate approach for this. And again, when we come to the next one, which is the external, I'm very curious on a personal level to see if educational settings have got their own. I couldn't be able to answer that for councillors today, but I think movements in the next steps, and if there are, is that bespoke to their communities? How does it impact on the children? But that's something I'm looking forward to getting more information about.
For children's services, we've looked at, we've done some audits around cultural competence for the families that we are working with and we do regular audits and we ensure that race is looked at when we're doing any type of audit, when we're in the partnership and we're doing audits. One of the things that we've identified is that sometimes race has been, we challenge when race has not been addressed as an issue and we do look at that. So we're doing some more work around that and it's a continuous, we didn't get, I think what we have to remember is we didn't get to this position in a couple of years. This is an ongoing position that we've been in for a very, very long time. And we're working with children and young people that are care experienced. We're doing some work with children and young people. We're doing work with our social workers. We've got a group at the minute, so we're looking at piloting some work within within a couple of areas where we know doesn't represent the community that it serves to look at some of the audits within there. Ensuring, if you go back to, if we look at our independent reviewing service and we're talking about education, that actually those are the people, if you look at children that are in care, those are the people that should be challenging any cultural incompetence around those children. They should be challenging schools when that's happening. They should be challenging right across the board. But actually, in that service, it doesn't reflect the community that it serves. So that's something else that we're actually looking at. We're looking at experiential days for people to come along, qualified social workers especially, that are from a non-white background. We're looking at that to encourage them to come into that service.
And I think just to add as well, another key thing that we've sort of talked about is we know that there are pockets of practice across the council, really good pockets of practice. And we've got really passionate workforce and people who, you know, want to drive forward in all elements of this. And we've been thinking, I guess, about that, the importance of how we get that operational, really rich information from, you know, our colleagues that are working on the frontline in schools, in social work and how we then feed that up through to be able to enable that corporate response and think about the changes that we need to do. So I know there's a number of boards thinking about the, I think it's the Equality Delivery Group and just making sure that this is really fed through so that actually, you know, our colleagues that are bringing through some really good ideas and good representations, that actually those ideas are being fed forward and we're able to take them up and act on that in terms of the ongoing action plan.
Yeah, we also talked about, myself and Bob, we met and we talked about how we, within the support groups that are currently there for staff, how do, the not so good practice and the issues that they're facing, how does that then get fed up to that group? So looking at a way that we could have champions from that, how do we then take that information and feed that up into that group and looking at that, how we do it, so it's more of a corporate response then.
So if I move us on, we've already, I think, talked about quite a lot about the relationship with our maintained schools, our academy trusts and how Learn Sheffield is providing some of that support about cascading good practice, but also how the group that Linda Joseph will be chairing will also feed into that. So I'm not going to repeat myself. And we obviously have our Equality Act impact assessments and impact assessments. That's something that we're really focusing on as a leadership team, about making sure that we are looking at those as policies come through to you. It is something that we should be doing. But again, it's about us making sure that we have that focus and are challenging ourselves around the impact of decision-making, which we're bringing to you, that has. And also what we haven't said is that use of data, both the data internally around what our workforce looks like and the demography and how that can be used to help shape our work, but also the data that we're using around our children and young people. And again, that absolutely is there to make sure that we're focusing our attention in the right place and is part of our plans for the future. Again, this is, there is, we are holding a mirror up to ourselves about our recruitment panels as well. So whilst we are needing to recruit, should be recruiting from our communities and increasing our number of young people coming into local government, we also know that we have challenges at the moment about our recruitment panels and we're really thinking hard about making sure that we're not just recruiting people who are like us, but that we're challenging ourselves around that. That will take time and that will involve us having... That will take time and that will involve us having panels that are representative and where we can challenge each other about whether we think those panels are right. And that's something we're really attuned to at the moment as well. And I've talked about data, we've already got evidence where data has helped us work to address inequalities, but we need to be absolutely putting that front and centre of everything that we're doing. And so again, that's absolutely, will be clear within the action plan. And in that sense, and I realise this is a discursive, it's not discursive, it is a monologue, it's a soliloquy by me and the team, but in that sense, we haven't given you an action plan with this is what we're going to do by when, because we need to have your feedback and then we can come back to you with, okay, how do we create this into an action plan? And maybe that you also say, look, I want to, I'd like to be part of how you set out that action plan. So again, improving communication, we we know that we need to be listening to our young people and we're continuing to do that, but also to our families and to our communities. And we need to be doing that across the board and we need to be the people who are excellent at doing that and holding our other partners to account. We already are good and, you know, you, many of you will have met our voice and influence workers, they challenge us very well, but we need to model that throughout our our organisation. And also, again, some of those conversations with training providers, and again, I was speaking to a number of people today and that importance of EDI training in our teacher training, in our social work training and making sure that's just an accepted conversation that we're having within that space. And we've already, I've already asked Learn Sheffield to look at this and to commission some work about improving our governing body representation, both increasing the, improving the age demographic so that we have younger people, but also diversity as well. That, as you can imagine, is in the first couple of months, but but really, again, it's that challenge that all of us take out of here of encouraging people to become parts of governing bodies of trustees so that we get representation from our communities so that, again, we're getting that internal challenge. And I think that is it, tis it, isn't it? So really, it's open for you to challenge us and to add to it and to say if there are areas that we haven't thought of, that we need to think about, and if there's, we need to do more of some things.
Thank you. Two hands raised, three, yeah, four, oh, five, six, so everybody, seven, so everybody in order. So first I've got Shonead, then Jane, then, oh, yeah, councillor Herbie, and then councillor Horner, Maru, Whitaker, and then you can go at the end, Ralph. And then I'll, I've got a couple of questions, so I'll go round at the very end. Okay, Shonead.
Very brief questions. On the second slide, I think, just to show I'm still awake at that point, it said justify appointments and was, can you just explain what justify meant? Oh, gosh. No, 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 whatever your first one was with the print so little, we couldn't read it.
Yeah.
So this comes straight from the Race Equality Commission recommendations. So that is what the Race Equality recommendation said, is that we need to recruitment panels to justify appointments. And I think there's obviously paragraphs within the Race Equality Commission that set out what that that means and I'm happy to send those over to you. So in that sense, we are responding to that rather than actually, those are not our words.
Thanks. And my second question was just, knowing that, you know, no longer a local education authority, but a small department with lots of chains out there, how do we actually influence the academy chains? Because they don't actually have to listen to us, do they? So what do we do to get them on board and keep them on board?
So we have really good relationships with our academy trusts and academies within the city and I think that they are as keen to work with us as as anybody else. And actually, the meeting on the 7th of November is not for local authority maintained schools, it is for every school. And so part of that conversation is how do we perhaps have training which we provide for everyone to begin with? And we'll bring that back to you for for conversation as a committee. And there is an expectation that actually all schools comply with EDI rules as well, but I'll bring Bob and Andrew in as well, just to supplement that.
Yes, so the the relationship with school through Learn Sheffield is very important because that's a member organisation that is owned by all our academies, all our maintained schools in Sheffield, so they're really a key part of that. And we're also now working through partnership meetings that we attend secondary special and primary school partnership meetings as well in order to do this. In fairness, even with maintained schools, we don't direct them what to do. So even with maintained schools, it is about discussion, partnership activity and influence.
And I do know that there are school improvement partners that are employed by Learn Sheffield that are working with academy trusts to support writing equality, diversity, inclusion statements and policy and practice. So it is happening and we can galvanise that and hopefully create momentum.
Is there any way in which we as councillors in our local wards would be able to be helpful in any way over this?
I think that's a very helpful suggestion and we can certainly, we can work out, you know, which schools relate to each member and we can, we can certainly provide you with information about where we're up to with that and the conversations that we're having and where you can provide support and perhaps make your inquiries as well. But we can certainly do that after the meeting as part of the process.
So final question, and do do we have any discussion and dialogue with the the private schools in Sheffield about this? Because we do have a number as well, don't we? So.
We have less of us, we have a less of a direct relationship with them, but nevertheless, they form part and parcel of our, some of our statutory duties still relate to private schools and they are on our circulation list in terms of the communication that we send out to schools every fortnight and they're also on our list of visits as well. So we will certainly use as opportunities to do that, councillor Mary.
Thank you, councillor Don.
Yeah, thank you. One of my questions was about the academies, but it was picked up throughout and councillor Richards has asked some of them. I would like to suggest that we have an update on a quarterly basis on how we're monitoring that. And if that could also go through our likes, that might be a way of really empowering local councillors, you know, through that. So, yeah, that's one of the, you know, that's one of the ways I feel that we could add another layer of accountability and it made sure then that the Race Equality Commission, you know, we're all in separate, but that is an area that we can pull it together. A bit of a hobby horse of mine, the next one, is about the Periodic Menopause Equality Charter, which I'm really pleased that Sabita's been doing this amazing work and she's been nominated nominated for a youth award at this ceremony in a couple of weeks' time. And it's the work that I've done through there that I've realised the high inequality on this with our ethnic minority, especially our women. And I'm really, really been amazed by their amount of work and how, you know, kind of, they are really open about discussing the real inequality in fertility, in menstrual health and how that affects how they go through. The Menopause Equality Charter will be done by March, International Women's Day. So I think it's a really important part of how we implement the Race Equality Commission through that because it, I've, I've found and discovered a real inequality in there and it's smashing one of those taboos that people don't want to discuss, won't discuss it. I'm also aware this is a Children and Families Board and we know that domestic violence escalates when women hit menopause. So again, I think that was something that I think we should be looking at is what we can do. Regarding governors, yes, when I had the privileged position of being my councillor dailies, it was quite obvious that it was male. They weren't stale, but they were male and they were a certain age. Do we need to look at the structures of how these people meet and when we're meeting? Do we need to look at diaries to make sure that we are taking into account religious, which I know Friday is a very important day? So do we need to look at that to make sure that we hit that equality? So I think even when we're looking at schools and how we communicate, is, I think we need to take that into account. And anything I can do to work with you on the, on my hobby horse, that would be absolutely great because there really is an inequality there and especially, so I think the amount of young women I've met, I cannot say how absolutely blown away I've been and how it really is empowering and liberating. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Don, I mean, the, the, that conversation about how do we make sure that our services are appropriate for the people we serve is is absolutely key. And actually, last week, we were having a conversation, for example, about housing services and housing repairs. And if if the housing repair is booked for a Friday afternoon, is that the right time when, and so how, this is, that's why this is an iterative process, because we've got some things that we're getting right and we need to get right now and we need to keep on challenging ourselves and making sure that we're having that constant conversation about, is this right? And taking that really personalised approach as well to the individual family, child and young person's needs so that we're, we're looking at that. And that is a long journey, we're on it, but it is a long journey. And also absolutely how schools do that, but that's part about that cascade of good practice. So when schools are are doing it really well and really right, how are we also celebrating that? And a number of schools do, so schools go above and beyond to try and answer the right questions for the, for the, for the children and young people and the families that they serve as well. So, but yeah, it's that constant challenge we need. Thank you councillor Herbie.
Firstly, thank you for that presentation. It's been very meaningful and I do want to agree with Jane about local area committees. However, they have their own challenges in recruiting and having people of BAME backgrounds come to their events. So I think as a recommendation, it would be more useful to assess how they will deliver it first before just going to them and then having that conversation. And if they're lacking in areas within themselves, then there's better alternatives. The second thing I wanted to ask is, there was a group that came last time with teachers, young people and professionals within the BAME communities who organise themselves. I don't know if the group has a name right now. Were they consulted in this? I'm aware that there's been some conversations.
So they haven't been consulted on this at this stage. We have asked for a meeting to be set up with them to go through it and to get that reverse scrutiny. And so I've, I've, I've been in contact with them pretty much on a monthly basis. So I've sent four or five messages out to the group and I've, I asked a couple of weeks ago to make sure we had the reverse scrutiny that we agreed we would have in six months' time from that meeting. And absolutely it was to look at this action plan and to have input into it and about it, but it's not happened yet. The intention is there.
Thank you for that. And the only reason I'm bringing them up is, you want to approach people who have the passion to see this realised, right? And they self-organised and every criteria you want to tick off, they were in, they're in that group, yeah, they've got it. So you don't have to go out looking for them when they came into this room and asked on their own incentives. But the second, the second thing is the young person voice, which links into that. What is that role? How are you going to recruit it? I may have missed it, but just a bit more clarification on the young.
Yeah, so I'm going to hand over to Amanda, particularly around young people, because there's a lot of work that we're doing and more we need to do as well.
So we have got, as you probably know, we've got the voice and influence workers, but we also have in, we also have our bright spots that we do annually. But it is about, it's, to me as well, it's about getting out there in communities and working with communities because it's really important that we do some of that. So when we're looking at needing and delivering services, we need to be looking what's already there and what's already available in our communities and make sure that we're supporting them because these are the people that live in our communities, know our communities and can actually work with them. So I think we need to be doing some of that. The voice, for the voice and influence workers, they're going to be doing some of the work and I forgot what's the, what's the name of the one? For, yeah, Takeover Day, yeah. So, yeah, so we've got, we are continuously looking at young people and getting their voice and ensuring that that, that they do reflect the community as well and that they're going into the community.
Yeah, sorry, I was just also going to say that I was very lucky to have a meeting with Sonia Gale in the last couple of weeks, who was part of the Race Equality Commission and I believe part of the legacy body. And it was a very fruitful discussion because I was recently at a race equality next steps meeting, it was at Pons Forge recently, and it was very obvious there wasn't young people involved in that conversation. So I was also very fortunate to meet colleagues from Sheffield College and from other establishments. So one of my next steps is to try and join together and get some young people to, and hear their voices at tables like the Legacy Committee or Sheffield City Partnerships or other areas so that we don't lose sight of the gap between.
Thank you. This one is a question, I think on slide one, if you can just go back to slide.
That's all we couldn't read.
Yeah, oh, slide two, oh, yeah. Slide three then. Go back, one more, back, go back, back, back. That. E says transparent use of equality acting impact assessments that are not tick boxes. I mean, I know you obviously need tick boxes to track progress. What did you mean by E specifically? That is not tick boxes.
So I think that that's, so, so I think that what we can get into in a culture in any organisation is that if you have to complete a form and equality impact assessment is a form that you have to complete if you've, if you're, you're creating a new policy, is it almost becomes something where you, you don't take the time, attention and care you should around it and that we don't look at it. So within the budget proposals, for example, we have an equality impact assessment, climate impact assessment, are we really paying attention to that and really thinking about the the impact something is having? And part of the problem with that is quite often it can be nuanced. So, I don't know, a decision to close something which looks so obvious could have a huge impact in a community area because suddenly you've got a building with shutters in it. So how are we actually really looking at it from every angle rather than just saying, okay, no, there's no equality issue because, because all we're doing is shutting a building? So that's what it means by the tick box, that we're really taking the attention and care that we are doing for for other reports. Does that helpful?
Just to clarify interpretation, because I know people use that term, but they translate in different ways, so thank you for that. Two last ones. Mention it whether it's this side of the room or this side, about Black History Month, whether it's useful in schools or not anymore. What does that mean?
So I had, I had a variety of different conversations. So one school I went to with a, a head teacher of colour, the conversation that she had with me was, look, actually, I feel that everything I do has a focus about being anti-racist. And so for me, that focus on Black History Month says it's only a month and a year, a month and a year, rather than it being right the way through. Another school, they said, look, this is absolutely key, we, you know, it's really important to us to celebrate Black History Month. It is a fundamental month in our year. So I suppose what I'm, I'm trying to say is that there are different approaches for different reasons across the city and it's not necessarily the wrong decision, it's the decision that is right for that school and the approach that they're, they're taking at that time. And I didn't explain that well enough, but that, that's, that's basic, it was, it's kind of like, we can't, we can't assume that us saying you have to do this is going to be right for every school because every, another school, another school might respond in a different way, but absolutely appropriate way to challenge racism.
Brilliant, thank you for your clarification. The last thing I think, I guess, is more of a statement, but when going out into communities, you'll probably have a trusted organisation that you send into communities. I'm heavily against that, I call that parachuting. There's organisations in. I'm heavily against that, I call that parachuting, there's organisations in all our communities right now who are working in education, doing CVs, consult them instead of a outside organisation coming in and collecting that data. Um, and you'll probably get genuine results. I know tick boxing and the way you explained that is a good thing about being thorough, however, you can't measure people's intentions. So go into those communities and this is already there, so I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you councillor Heyby, Mary Dischus, just want to come back in.
Yeah, so I just want to, so, um, I, I was slightly wrong, um, uh, not slightly, I was wrong, um, about the recruitment panels to justify appointments. We have, um, uh, concertina'd that. Um, it comes from, it is part of the recommendations, but it's the, um, first recommendation, um, uh, which, which, and then it's action two within that and then it's paragraph E and I. Um, and it is about making sure that you're justifying your recruitment and making sure that A, you're making sure that the right people are on the panel, but then that, for example, you're not, um, excluding someone because of their name or, or something like that, that you're absolutely justifying your appointment, that, that fair enough, Sarah?
Yeah, I think it's a paraphrase, it's quite a long paragraph, so it talks about panels, um, being able to, being held to, to account for their decisions. So I think it's, um, obviously as Mary said earlier, it's backed up by the whole of the, the report and there will be, uh, greater, um, expansion on this in the report itself. But I think what it was getting at is that, um, it shouldn't be just a case of accepting what the panel said. They should be expected to be able to, um, set out their reasons for that and be able to actually explain why a particular candidate was successful and why another one wasn't objectively. Um, so just if I was used as a paraphrase of quite a lengthy, uh, point in the recommendations.
Thank you, I've got, um, four more people to ask questions if we can try and, um, yeah, if we can try and be succinct as possible, thank you councillor Horner.
Thank you Chair, I'll just go off a very slight tangent to begin with because I've just got one question. But, um, when I came home from council yesterday, I'm a former airman. Um, I was very, very, still am actually, very distressed about what came out yesterday about, about the Royal Air Force Red Arrows aerobatic team and the issues around sexism and all sorts of things. It's not about race in itself, but why I make this point is because what, what was clear to me in that situation was that the victims of all of this found it very hard, uh, to come forward. And therefore the question that I've got today is about all the conversations we're having with people. How do we know that we're getting the right answers? I mean, this is possibly an impossible question to answer. When you get, when you get somebody in to talk to you, are we getting answers from people? Are we confident we're getting honest answers from people? Are we getting answers from people that they think we, we want to hear? Um, that's really the thrust of what I'm trying to say, it's a difficult question, isn't it? How do we set up? How do we actually get to people? Um, because I've often been in situations where people have had meetings and say, look folks, off, you know, everything's off, whether it's on the record or off the record, you know, nothing, please feel free to say what you want to say, um, and I'm not sure that people do. I was in a meeting once with a senior officer actually in the Air Force where he said to everybody, please tell me what you think of me. My colleague, Skoota Language, said, well sir, I think you're a pillock. Um, I'm not sure that was a good career move on his part, um, but it illustrates the problem, I think.
So, uh, uh, sort of personally, I don't think you can do that in a meeting. I think a large meeting, that's, that's absolutely possible. I think it is about the cultures and values of an organisation. I think it's about having psychologically safe spaces where people can raise concerns. Um, and I think it's understanding that you don't necessarily know what's happening in somebody's life and it does take a lot of bravery and courageousness to call out something, um, which is, um, obvious and in front of you. And actually, we all need to call out such things when we think that it's, it's not right and appropriate because there will be a number of people around that table in those organisations who see that. Um, and we've got lots of evidence of, of that over the last few days about how, um, actually it can be really, really difficult to call out, um, uh, behaviours that aren't, aren't good. Um, it's really imperative to me as a leader that I am setting out a culture where people do feel safe to raise concerns and that we do have a system where people feel able to challenge appropriately. Um, because it's only by doing that we get the right answers and it's by constantly triangulating your information and challenging yourself and accepting that you are not right, um, and that you are listening. And I think, um, the point that councillor Heyby made about listening also to communities and to what people are saying. Um, that's how, uh, you, you, you are in a slightly safer space. But I think we all need to be acutely aware that sometimes people can behave very poorly.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Marouf.
Thank you, thank you Chair, very, very quickly, uh, two things. One is I totally agree with what councillor Heyby said earlier, that we really do need to engage with the younger people because it's so easy for the local authorities to be diverted to the recognised groups uh, and some of the communities that you're actually engaging with. The younger people feel that these are the gatekeepers, that you're not actually getting past a, at all to get the right answers. Uh, I might be a little bit outspoken there, but I have actually said this on many occasions, that some of these groups are been there for generations and it's dead easy to actually do that. So young people is what you need, you don't need people like me. So that's, that's where you need to engage. The, the, the other area that I'm, I'm keen to look into and I did raise it, uh, when we first started to talk about this. And by the way, I forgot to say thank you for what you've done thus far because we've come a long way since the first meeting that we had, uh, which was quite a difficult one. So at least we've started the journey, that's, thank you for that. Uh, but the, the, the question that still arises and I think councillor Horner wouldn't remember it, but we did ask this question last time, was, uh, certain schools in Sheffield and, and this applies in Birmingham, Bradford, Leicester and various different places, uh, some of them will be 90% British white, some of them will be 90% BAME schools. How are we trying to integrate these? Because that is where the difficulty starts to come because if people are living in a community that never actually engages with another community, which is quite, it, it, it's been highlighted by many, many surveys. I don't know what the answer is, but clearly there has to be an answer for people to recognise each other's communities. And maybe we, we might start looking at it first in Sheffield or look at other people who've looked at it already because there doesn't seem to be that, that sort of engagement and that sort of isolates communities even further. And we've got that in Sheffield, that you don't need to look very far at all. So that is just an observation and something that we might like to build on Chair.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I mean, I think absolutely, and I think it's finding good practice from other places as well. Um, and I think the challenge is absolutely right, how do we, how do we look to ensure that, um, all of our communities um, have a clear understanding of different people's, um, uh, perspectives and cultures and, uh, beliefs and also, um, uh, challenges that, that they face as well. So, um, I think we can build that into particularly our school, uh, conversations and perhaps partnering and pairing of schools, um, as well. And to a certain extent, some of that will happen in large multi-academy trusts where they already have a large, uh, uh, part of the, um, uh, the geography of Sheffield. Um, but I think your challenge is absolutely right and we'll, we'll take it on and, and add it in.
Thank you councillor Whitaker.
Just quickly, um, I have attended a few EDI training sessions online, so I really take your point that they're far better face to face and I, I absolutely agree with that. Uh, on one session I attended, um, we were referring to people as from the BAME community. And, um, there were two, uh, women on the session who were from that community who, um, said they didn't, it was a term they didn't like. And they explained why they, they felt it didn't go along with inclusion and, and various other reasons. Now, today in this chamber, we've spoken about BAME, people of colour and non-white people. So I often, I often feel that I don't really know what term to use. I don't know what term is more acceptable or appropriate in given situations. Um, what about people who are from those communities? What about people who are people of colour or from the BAME community? What, what is their preference? Do they have one? Um, and I think that's something that I find a little bit confusing, so, yeah.
So I'm happy to give you my perspective and I can see Amanda's, um, uh, jumping a bit as well. Um, so I, I, I think that there, um, is a clear, uh, view that if, uh, BAME, um, isn't, is not specific enough and actually, um, there are, um, you know, that, there are hu- huge cultural religious differences, um, between, uh, different people. So whether you're part of a Sikh community, um, whether you are, um, from a Muslim community. Um, and then there's a whole range of intersectionality that goes across that, which creates, um, some of the issues. So for me, I think it's about listening and, uh, listening to what people are saying, uh, and, um, uh, responding to that rather than necessarily to using overarching terms. But that's very difficult when we're looking at an overarching, um, strategy. Um, and so you're quite right that we've, we've perhaps used different language because all of us have different language that we're, we're comfortable and with, but, um, Amanda.
I think it's very much what you, what you've said, I think it depends on the audience. I think we're never, I think if I'm talking to an individual, it's whatever that individual wants me to call them is what I want. And I think it's okay to ask people what they prefer. Um, but I think it's really difficult when you're, when you're looking at, um, a cross cutting more of a, I would say, a political term. Um, I think, you know, I think it's harder then to identify because actually there'll always be some people that may not be happy with regards to that term. So I think it's just about trying to find that happy medium, but I would, um, we, we have this discussion a lot, yeah.
Can you just come back on that? Um, I think it's interesting though that, you know, in this room, in this last couple of hours, we have reused those three terms and, and it's the same audience, you know, it's the same audience. So we're not tailoring it to the audience that it is, you know, it's the same audience and we've used three different terms in a, in a short space of time, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marouf.
Uh, thank you, thank you for the report. Um, unfortunately everyone stole most of my questions, uh, nevertheless.
We're reading a sign of relief.
Especially those that know me in other committees know I do have many questions. Uh, nevertheless, uh, just, uh, going on the point about, uh, BAME, I mean, I'd, I'd like to put it on the record that I don't agree with the, with the BAME term and, uh, generally don't appreciate being referred to by that term. We do need to recognise that different groups within that particular term have different needs and wants and face different circumstances, especially many of our young children. Um, my question is about, uh, school governors. I mean, ultimately, school governors are responsible for schools' visions, aims and objectives and governors are there to provide an oversight, uh, oversight and accountability and ensure head teachers are held to account. So my question is, has council ever done any research on the diversity of governors at schools throughout the city? Especially those with a more diverse cohort of children?
So, um, so, um, I think that, uh, well, I'll let, um, Andrew, tell me if I'm wrong. I don't think that we, um, have, I think that in that sense, schools, um, have that information about their governors, their governing bodies themselves. Part of what we have asked Learn Sheffield to do is to have a more coordinated approach so that we are, um, uh, looking at schools, making sure that schools do have that diversity. And there is differences, so, um, Springfield, which is not too far from here, um, Linda Joseph, the head teacher, works really hard at making sure that there is a good representation um, within her school from the local community of teaching staff, but also, um, within the governing body as well. Um, and again, it's about how do we celebrate that good practice, share it and make sure that, um, uh, other schools are, um, reflecting on that and following that. But I may be wrong, so I will pass to Andrew because he's looking desperate to come in.
I don't know about that, but you're, you're right, I, uh, I think it, however, I think it demonstrates the shift in responsibility, uh, for governance in schools and academies that has occurred over a period of time. So first of all, in relation to schools, maintain schools. Whereas I think about four or five years ago, there was a model in term, that was applied in terms of how the makeup of governing bodies was, was constructed, including the balance between staff governors, community governors, et cetera. That's actually been withdrawn now by the DFE and actually each governing body, each school determines the balance of membership within its own instrument of governance. In other words, it determines for itself what that is. So on the one hand, that could be helpful in terms of actually creating a governing body that actually is more reflective of the community that it serves. But equally, it means that we have less of a grip in terms of knowledge of those individual governing bodies. Certainly in relation to academies, um, there isn't even requirement for, uh, an academy to have a local governing body. So in, in, in actual fact, whether they have governance that is reflective of their communities in, in law is not actually reflected, um, as part of that. And certainly in the past, when we would have had more control through the instruments of governments, the issue, instrument of governance that was issued to schools, we would have then maintained a register. So I think it's an excellent question and I think it is part of the commission activity that we've asked Learn Sheffield to undertake and will hopefully get us back to a position where we've got greater awareness of the makeup of governing bodies.
Thank you, um, could I just ask for what sort of timeframe are we looking at that?
So the piece of work has already been commissioned from Learn Sheffield around governing bodies, so they are already, um, working on that. But Bob, I can see is coming in, so he might know more than I do.
Um, yeah, it's just to let you know that, um, I am part of that working group. Um, there is a national shortage of governors as well. There is an organisation, I think commissioned by the DFE, but that might not be right for anybody taking minutes, called Inspiring Governance. And myself, Learn Sheffield colleagues, Inspiring Governance, um, the Chamber of Commerce and Sheffield Hallam University are joining forces to undertake a recruitment campaign. And it was really refreshing to hear that we could seek maybe some councillors' support in how we can utilise local area communities. And if you did offer a kindness, how can we help supporting that? It will be tapping into the resources that you'll know far better than we will in some instances. I believe Sheffield Hallam are doing a week in focus in the early spring, which signposts its students and employees. So we're going to use that as a springboard. So I'll know much more, um, following that event. And as this gains momentum, I'll be able to let councillors know and as and when that happens and develops. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, any more questions, um, or comments on this report? Well, thank you very much, uh, for coming and giving us this report. It has been really interesting and a really good opportunity for us to catch up and understand what has been going on over the last three months. Looking forward to catching up again, uh, later date. What I, just one thing from me is regarding a, maybe a working group or a workshop or a task and finish where members can become involved. So if I could ask for an email to go out to all members of the committee to ask of any of the members that want to get involved in this piece of work, if you can put yourselves forward, if this is what you're interested in doing, I would really appreciate that as well. Thank you very much. You can stick your own wherever you like, Sarah.
Thank you Chair, um, so, um, we had asked the committee, in terms of recommendations, the officers had asked the committee to, um, note the progress made. It also says, um, and to comment on the direction of travel. Obviously, you've been doing that during your, your comments and questions. So, um, in terms of a decision, I think it would be helpful just for the committee to confirm that they're, they're noting the progress made. Um, the second recommendation was to agree to receive TWICE yearly update and there was a bit of a discussion earlier around quarterly. So it is, I just wanted to check if councillor Dunne was wanting to make that as a formal amendment to that recommendation.
Yeah, I just think then it would show the real commitment that we've got towards tackling this. Do you know, you've definitely got that and I think you've heard it. However, as we know, it's very complex, so I think it just needs to be, uh, kept on the agenda. Thank you.
Wow, we're just about to throw a banner in then though and so could we have it termally? Seeing as though we could. So, no, have you got a second for councillor Dunne's?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, so councillor Marouf's going to second that. Are we all in agreement that we want it quarterly? Thank you. And do we, uh, agree the other recommendation, number one? Yep, thank you. Okay, um, again, mindful of time. Uh, our next item on the agenda is agenda item number 11, uh, which is the Sheffield Children's Safeguarding Partnership Annual Report for 2021, 22 and 2022, 23, uh, which you will find in your pack starting at page 85. And I've got a number of officers who've come to report on this today. And if you'd just like to introduce yourselves, um, that'd be great, thank you.
So again, I'm Amanda Brown, um, and I'm Assistant Director for Quality Assurance and Involvement Service.
Hi, I'm Rhea Walsh, I'm the Service Manager for the Children's Safeguarding Partnership.
Good afternoon, I'm Lesley Smith, I'm the Independent Chair and Scrutineer of the Children's Safeguarding Partnership.
And good afternoon, I'm Rachel Greenoff and I'm the Project Coordinator for the Sheffield Children's Safeguarding Partnership. And good afternoon, I'm Rachel Greenoff and I'm the Project Coordinator for the Sheffield Children's Safeguarding Partnership.
So we've just come to present the annual report. So under Working Together, each partnership is asked each year to comment and present a report on the 12 months' work, looking at the safeguarding arrangements and commenting on the learning from any child safeguarding practice reviews. So I'm hoping you've all had a chance to review the report and we're really keen to hear your feedback.
Thank you. Does anyone have any feedback, questions or comments on the report today? Nope. Well, you've sat all that time. What I would like to say is thank you for the report. And I understand that the work that you do is extremely difficult. Having sat on, as a member on the Sheffield Safeguarding Partnership, the work that you do is absolutely incredible and really important to the, you know, the health and wellbeing of our children and safety of our children in the city. Amanda, did you just want to come in?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, what Rhea forgot to say is people that are here, actually Rachel and Rhea and myself are new to the partnership since the last, so the old one was the previous, the 21/22, that's why you've got two, that was late to being presented. And the new one, you'll have probably noticed, is set out differently. Do you want to just explain a little?
Yeah, so we're really keen to improve. And the national panel have actually commissioned the What Works Centre for Children's Social Care. And they produced an annual report that looked at all of the annual reports and they gave feedback to safeguarding partnerships around what would be more effective in their annual reports. So we've really spent time scrutinising that. And I think, again, you'll see the layout's very different. We've tried to do a much bigger focus on why we've picked the priorities we have in terms of the partnership and actually the impact and effectiveness on the children and families that we obviously serve. So I think that you can see a stark difference in our approach.
You can, thank you. There's a lot more in it, I think, for us to read and a lot more context in there. I think it's a really easy read with regards to the way that it's set out. I like the, this might sound really fluffy, but I like the pictures in it. I think it kind of gives it, it gives it substance, it gives it life and it helps people to really kind of be engaged in the report rather than it kind of being lots of, lots of text and no real, real life to it. So thank you. And as I said, I understand the work that you're all doing is absolutely imperative to safeguarding our children. I liked the bit in there about youth voice because that is something that this committee is absolutely championing in Sheffield, within all of the work that we're doing. And I think that's just really important. So I think councillor Dunne and councillor May Richards wanted to comment.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry that I have a lot of questions, but I used to sit on it myself. So I'm well aware of all the really, really hard work. Can I just ask one question? I'm sorry if I didn't do the research on this. The Children's Commissioner, is there anything at all in her recent report that we've had to incorporate into this? I'm just quite clear, I know that yesterday we debated that they didn't take on board the Children in Care motion that was, you know, that was passed. I'm just wondering, is there anything in that that we were already doing or that we've had to incorporate that we found? Because I know that we have always kind of set the bar slightly. So it's sometimes we don't sing our praises high enough, guys, and you should. But I'm just wondering if there's anything in that report that was needed to be changed, amended?
Yeah, I'm happy to pick up on that. One of the things in the report you'll see at the end is the scrutineers' report. So I've tried to separate out the chairing aspect, which is setting the conditions for partners to be able to challenge each other from the scrutiny in terms of how effectively are we working together. So there's an annual scrutineers' report and I also do a quarterly one, which I bring to the partnership. And I will always pull out what the Children's Commissioner is working on, what she's hearing from the big voice. Because when we think about hearing children's voices, I think it's important to remember the Children's Commissioner and her officer doing that on a day-to-day basis at scale. So lots of what comes out of that is relevant to us. So we always tag back to where we're in Sheffield in relation to the themes that the Children's Commissioner highlights. Councillor Richards.
I was just going to say that a bit like what councillor Dale said, was that the reason you haven't got many questions is because we actually understood your report, because we did like the pictures and the graphics and also it has been written in plain language, which are very much welcome. And I think safeguarding is something that, you know, I've been a safeguarding governor at school and it's the job that nobody wants and it's the one that nobody thinks about until something happens. And then it's like a major, major, and that's why it's so important that this work is actually identified and understood. And I don't know why we don't actually send this to all of our councillors, because we're all corporate parents and lots of us are governors and stuff. Oh, you've already done it.
It's going to S and R, but we can ensure that that does.
I just think, yeah, that's important, that we actually acknowledge that this is, if I say paddling along in the background, I don't mean to understate what you're doing. But if you're not there doing that, you know, we'd be pretty stuffed.
Thank you. I think that's it. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for waiting till the end of the meeting, but we do appreciate that. Thank you very much. So I think the next item on the agenda is agenda item number 12, which is Update Report from the Strategic Director of Children's Services. And I think that might be noted.
It is. So I take it as being read. And if there's any questions from that report, I'm happy to answer them or to get one of my trusty colleagues to answer it.
No questions? No, we're all right with that. We'll accept that report. Thank you, Meredith. For the next item on the agenda, we did move agenda item number eight, which is the, bear with me, which is the budget, the revenue and capital budget.
I'm just going to, before we go private.
Yes, oh, sorry. Yeah, before we go private, yes, sorry. I was going to do it under another business and I remembered that we're not going to be online. So I would just like to thank members for yesterday passing through the motion to recognise care experience as a protected characteristic. The meeting yesterday of full council, we brought that motion forward and working cross-party, we've all agreed on that motion. That motion will then be taken now to Strategy and Resource, where we will be engaged with and encouraging young people with care experience to come and speak to us about their experience. And we really can't wait to be able to celebrate that Sheffield is part of the national campaign to ensure that until we get it recognised by government in Sheffield, we will be using care experiences as a protective characteristic, looking at that through every policy decision that we make within the council. So, yeah, we're really excited about it. It was a bit rushed through yesterday at full council, but that was the first step to be able to then get that to Strategy and Resource, where we will be able to celebrate with our young people and with our staff to be able to make sure that Sheffield is up there doing that. But we're already doing a lot of it, as I said yesterday in my speech on the motion. A lot of what it asks of as part of that campaign, we're already doing in Sheffield anyway. So for us, this is a kind of formalising what we're already doing in anticipation of it becoming an actual, being put into legislation. So thank you to all members that voted that through yesterday. Look forward to seeing you, everyone at Strategy and Resource from this committee to observe and celebrate afterwards. Thank you very much. So, yeah, I'm back again, sorry. So agenda item number eight is the Revenue and Capital Budget. A part of this report is for closed session. If officers would just like to come forward and present, introduce the report and then we will close the webcast, if you'd just like to come forward.
So shall I, I'll probably do it.
Yep.
So I'll introduce the report. So we'll go fairly quickly into closed session. So this is setting out the proposed budget over the next few years, including next year. What we are looking to do, and I think we've already talked about it within the committee structure, is how already we are ensuring that we, particularly around children and family services, are as cost-effective and continue to look to be cost-effective to make sure that we have the right early intervention, prevention, to prevent escalation of need. And when children are coming through statutory services, that we're making the right decisions at the right time. And also recognising that within our world of special educational needs and disabilities, that there's been a significant increase in children with education healthcare plans, which has seen a knock-on impact on home-to-school transport, which again has put pressures within the budget. So what we are doing and what we are going to take you through is how we look at addressing whilst we have a budget increase for next year, that doesn't match the pressures that are coming through. So how we are looking to address those pressures and where we still have some gaps in those pressures. But it's important that we have a conversation about that within the confines of the committee.
Thank you, Meredith. So at this point, we will be closing the meeting for the webcast. I'd like to thank anyone who's watching for logging in today. And just to let you know that the next meeting of this committee will be on Tuesday, the 19th of December at 2pm. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We now have to take a formal vote in public on agenda item number eight, the budget. During the adjournment of recording, we formally agreed to extend the meeting and will now vote on the recommendations, which are: Note the financial pressures for 2024/25 detailed within this report and the new income available to mitigate them. Note the measures proposed in the report to mitigate these pressures and that they will be presented to the Strategy and Resource Policy Committee as part of the council's budget. Note that officers will work to develop any necessary detailed implementation plans for the proposals in this report so that the proposals, once agreed, can be implemented as planned before or during 2024/25 financial year. And notes that in this proposal, that there will be a further update at the December committee meeting. Is there any dissent? Are we all agreed? Agreed? Oh, councillor Marouf.
Yeah, subject to what I said when we were off air, we will go along with it, but we have great concerns. In fact, we would have abstained, but in this particular case, because it's just for noting, we will.
I think we all have concerns, councillor Marouf. And I think we can lay a large number of them at the government's door, can't we? But the fact that we've had our money just reduced so significantly by the government, it's not anything of our making in that sense.
I wasn't saying it was, but I think what I was trying to clarify was that this work area, we need to take decisions as well as to how far we support them. Because we don't want them to keep coming back to us with the same situation every year.
Thank you, councillor Marouf. So in this instance, are we agreeing, are we noting these to take Strategy and Resource? I will ensure that I represent the Strategy and Resource, the committee's concerns regarding this, so that we look at how we support this committee's budget moving forward. Is everybody agreed? Sorry. Yep. Are we agreed? Thank you.